Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please, and you have not entered any numbers. Please re-enter the meeting password followed by pound. You have not entered any numbers. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You are unmuted.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Hi. Okay, yes. You have. Yeah, thank you. That's no good. Yeah, she's really good. Behavioral training. No medication.
Yeah, yeah. We'd be, we'd be, we'd be good. We'd be great. We'd be great.
And something outside gave him like, and then.
All the one kind of right out of the fourth, yeah.
But that.
Well, I think there's other thoughts.
And so we were like, yeah.
That was high line strong. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So I would, yeah. Oh, yeah. So, um. I probably should, you know. Well, I would have told. Hey, how are you? I never really got to. I think I was. You had that whole room. Oh. Oh, we're very big team. Yeah. Oh.
Yeah, they may have an issue with that. Okay. She'll be on it.
I like this one.
Yeah. You mean, the new trip?
And he's already come down. You know, we need, um.
True. For drive. Oh, are you back at the trip? Where in Jersey?
And then he's like, something he likes. So like he could.
So is that, so you did say New York? You did say New York. I was thinking Jersey.
Like, I don't know what works. Well, we don't have a viewer bell, so just outside. July. Were you home today?
You know, the guys I know for years. Michael Cory. John.
I'm five foot five, so I can't tell you much.
I'm glad, I'm glad I won you over finally.
Ken, how was it?
How are you doing?
Perfect. Thank you.
Joel's not gonna be here. Boy, we're, we're the.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, sir.
DJ, how you been?
Hey, there.
How are you, RD? What is that? Oh. Thank you.
Crystal was in line four hours. I mean, Estelle.
Crystal was online.
I got in there.
I just went.
Two hours, five minutes.
Mayor, we're talking about Estelle, right? Not Crystal.
Call a state session of the city council to order. Please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of the flag. Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening to make decisions for our upcoming year, that year of festivals and, and citizen input and hopefully we'll have a good meeting and watch over us so that we make the right decisions for the right reasons. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which there is no end. I apologize. Normally I have it written down, but, uh, it's budget season, so I was working on budget all day. Madam Clerk, uh, roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger?
Here.
Mr. Penabone?
Present.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Ms. Sultana?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here. Approval of the agenda?
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussions, deletions, or additions, or deletions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Penabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry. So in order to change the ordinance, should I, should we, should I introduce?
We'll do that, we'll do that when we talk.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye. Presentation to City Council. It says NA, but I know we have.
Presentation?
Action on the minutes.
Action on the minutes.
Minutes of our August twenty seventh meeting?
Moved or approved?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion, deletions, additions? Roll call.
Mr. Penabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Sultana?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Now we'll have the presentation to the council. Brandon.
I don't know mine.
I have it on mine. I have it on mine.
Good evening, council. I will not eat the microphone this time, um, but thank you guys for having me. Uh, Kate, I want to let her know we have a few people on call today with this presentation. Uh, Catherine Simmons from Nurture Nature Center as well as Lauren Fosbener as, from there as well. So we're here tonight to present, uh, the, or to provide a presentation for the resolution in front of you guys tonight, uh, to enable or to adopt a resolution, uh, for a mid-science, a science-based, uh, mid-interim, um, climate action plan goal adoption. Uh, with that, I will leave it over to Kate for the start of our presentation today.
Thank you, Brandon. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, Kate, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. Great. So as City Council knows, um, Easton is committed to taking, um, action on climate and we've been doing this for many years now. Um, um, Mayor Panto signed up with the Global Covenant of Mayors back in twenty sixteen and since then, we have been making steady progress on what we need to do to be part of that agreement. It's an international agreement, uh, with cities, um, governments all over the world that are committed to taking action about climate and improve the sustainability of their cities. Next slide, please. Um, as part of our, uh, commitment to the global covenant, there are several steps that we were supposed to complete over the years, which we have. Um, and they range from education to engagement and taking action, um, on plans and reporting. We started with doing some climate vulnerability assessments, developing a climate action plan, climate adaptation plan, and inventory that's been updated, um, just last year. And then making sure that we're making progress to those, um, the, the targets that we have set previously. Next slide. As you know, we have a climate action plan that was, uh, adopted back in twenty twenty-one and has been recently revised last year. Um, I presented to you last January, uh, in twenty twenty-four and we were able to get that, uh, revision approved. It includes a appendix that has the climate adaptation plan and it also included a revised net zero target by twenty fifty. The rest of the plan remained fairly similar to what it was previously and it includes, uh, vision and objectives for the city, which are to make the city a leader in climate actions. Look to source clean and local energy, transform our buildings to be energy efficient and sustainable. Make sure that the benefits of our actions are equitably distributed and we're not, um, creating undue burden on underserved populations. The next slide, please. It also includes making the city a pedestrian and bike-friendly place and supporting public, uh, transit. It includes becoming a leader in the transportation and having innovative partnerships and programs related to that as well as understanding the risks of climate and what those impacts are and how can we be better prepared to mitigate those risks. Next slide. So as part of the global covenant agreement, we report through a platform called Carbon Disclosure, um, Program. It's CDP and this also gets, um, people across the, the country, but also the world are reporting to this platform. It's an international group that allows for evaluation and accountability of government, cities, and communities based on their actions related to climate. And we've been doing this since twenty eighteen. You can see it, the dashboard on the screen is showing our scores since we started. Um, and so we started on the low side, Cs and Ds, but over the years we've increased and we got to B. And then just last year, twenty twenty-four, um, happy to report that the city got a A minus. Um, and that was due to the, the work that we did with having an updated inventory and having the adaptation plan approved in twenty twenty-four as well as revising the twenty fifty, our end goal target to be net zero, which made it a science-based target. And all of those changes helped bump our grade up to an A minus. Next slide, please. So the reporting is done. It's an online questionnaire that I fill out with the help of, um, the, the city employees like Dave Hopkins, Rob Christopher, and now Brandon, as well as the EAC. Um, and it also includes our climate action plans, vulnerability assessment, our inventories, and any of the actions that we're taking related to the plan. And there's a number of, um, scoring methodologies that they have. They always, um, talk with us and give us feedback about our score and our work over the year. So we can understand what we need to do the next year to improve the score. And ways to improve the score can include having more robust adapt, adaptation goals, more actionable action, more, more actions that can be quantified in trying to, uh, mitigate the greenhouse gas emissions that the city contributes. Um, and then an important one is having a science-based target. And we did adopt the science-based target for twenty fifty of net zero back in twenty twenty-four. But they also are asking us to have an interim science-based target if we want to push our score up even more to an A. And why would we get, want to get an A? Well, the A, uh, any of the cities, governments that get an A are actually published online. They're publicly available. They're listed. It makes us an international leader and Brandon's gonna talk more about this, um, in later slides. But you can see the scores here. There were about a hundred and twelve cities that got an A last year, uh, which is about fifteen percent of all reporting. Um, so it's not an exclusive club, but it, it really helps, you know, position Easton in, as that leader that we want to be. Next slide. So, uh, again, just thanking you for helping us move forward with the twenty fifteen net zero goal in twenty twenty-four. That helped us get to the A minus. But we now are asking you to consider, um, an additional interim science-based target to make sure that we're on track to get to that twenty fifty end goal and to have us positioned to even increase our score even more. Um, as we've mentioned previously, Bethlehem has a net zero goal by twenty forty and they have an interim goal that's sixty percent by twenty thirty, which is science-based. Right now, our twenty thirty goal is thirty percent, which is on the low side. And so we're gonna be asking for a bump up to sixty-five percent by twenty thirty-five. Um, and then just a note here that net zero, um, cause there are some questions about, well, what does that actually mean? Net zero is about reducing your emissions as much as possible, but there's going to be some avoidable, uh, unavoidable emissions, um, that won't let us get to zero. And in order to get net zero, we can purchase carbon credits or offset those in other ways. Next slide, and I think I turn it over to Brandon at this point, right?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Kate, for everything. I really appreciate that. It's a great highlight of where we are and where we've been and I'm gonna talk more so about where we can go next. Uh, so the graph in front of you now is really just a graphic to show where that twenty thirty-five, uh, goal puts us, that sixty-five percent reduction. Uh, it seems like a significant jump from twenty thirty, a thirty percent, but it's also to keep in mind that this is a goal where we're just trying to achieve it. And it's one of those things where there's no harm in not achieving it, uh, but there's no excuse not to try. Um, you know, and this is all based on the twenty eighteen baselines that Nurture Nature had been using for the climate action plan. Um, and our goal kind of puts us right in between the middle. It's a good way to know where we're going towards that twenty fifty goal and if we're gonna be able to achieve net zero or not. Uh, this graph is a detailed, uh, way to see where our progress should go if we're assuming that the reductions we're aiming for are applied. Um, so you see the graph kind of tapers down, uh, reasonably smoothly if we're aiming for that sixty-five percent by twenty thirty-five as an interim goal as well. Uh, the change sounds more drastic than the data shows it is. Um, it's really just kind of keeping that natural curve going and keeping us on the path to that twenty fifty net zero that Kate had mentioned. Uh, the rationale for it really is the fact that we're, uh, the main rationale originally was that it's coming up for CDP reporting. It is a requirement to get an A with them. Uh, but more so than that, it's also just a signifier of us making the correct choices for our city, for our climate, for our residents. Uh, other things that we're currently doing are gonna end up helping towards this grade anyway. For example, updating the city's climate vulnerability assessment. Uh, myself, Nurture Nature, Lafayette professors and students are working on getting a group that will be able to do this over the next coming six months. That was identified as one of our priority actions in our climate action task force that happened back in July. But this also is a voluntary target. There is no consequence of failure. There, there is nothing the CDP will, you know, they're not gonna come to you to knock on our door and leave a bad Yelp review. Um, there, there is no consequence here. But this being said, it also is that checkpoint to assess our progress. It's kind of like when you run a marathon and getting your split somewhere across that mile, across, across that race. Um, you wanna know where you are and you wanna know how you can improve or where you should improve. And it's just a way for us to keep doing that and keep understanding what we can do better or where we can do better. Uh, and just a statistic is that majority of adults in the A area, metropolitan area, fifty-five percent believe that local officials should do more to address global warming. An even higher percentage of seventy-four to seventy-eight percent support policies that would reduce carbon emissions. These things that we're doing in the climate action plan, our goals, our adaptations, all of this is well-supported by residents in the valley and particularly in Easton. Everyone has started to see that climate change is here. It's not going anywhere. It's gonna get worse. And the more that we do to publicly acknowledge that and address that, uh, i- the more our change can be effective. But on top of that, when we talk about this goal, we also have co-benefits. I mean, at the end of the day, a goal is just a goal, but if we do nothing, what, it doesn't matter. Committing to this goal allows us to also show that we mean commitment to public health, economic benefit, economic growth. It shows we're willing to commit to developing renewable resources in the valley or be able to provide equity to residents that don't have trees. Um, being able to enhance our city in ways that mean something to residents and help them save money and keep our city and streets safer and cleaner and more beautiful. Uh, so this is the way that we kind of achieve this interim goal. You know, it's one thing to have the goal, but understanding how can we get there and if we can even get there is vital. That graph that I showed, showed it does, it is part of a natural progression. Uh, but these are screenshots actually from our climate action plan, uh, showing municipal operations, just examples of municipal operations that we can complete. Uh, MO one is to continue to reduce emissions from municipal operations. Otherwise, looking at, uh, converting our fleet over to EV vehicles is a really easy example of that. Um, installing EV chargers that are municipal-owned, installing renewable-owned municipals, um, projects. But MO two is simply implementing Easton's climate action plan in the best way that we can. That's, you know, part of, really my main job and my main responsibility here in the city of Easton. of Easton. But reducing emissions from municipal operations could also mean doing lighting retrofits or upgrading an HVAC system that's old or outdated or converting from oil heat to electric or renewable natural gas. And more often than not, those things are saving us money as well as getting us down the right track. In transportation examples, maybe TR1 of reduced vehicle miles traveled by single occupancy vehicles. We can do that by making our sidewalks safer, our streets safer, having bike lanes, providing transportation hubs with access to bikes and scooters and EV vehicles as well. TR2 is directly the support adaptation or support the adoption of electric vehicles. And inside the Climate Action Plan, there's also example of plan structures for each strategy. Now, in this, it specifically names the action number, the action, if it's a new or existing action, statewide cap action, co-benefits, lead actor, and metric. So TR1B, for example, participate in regional efforts to further expand transportation or public transportation options, including the possibility of a light rail system in Lehigh Valley. Light rail systems do not exist in Lehigh Valley. That would be something that is new, thus under the new category, but it is part of the statewide Climate Action Plan as well. So we're just matching the state on where they are. My argument is that we should do better than the state. We should aim to be the leader in the state and try and lead the state down the right path, too. Co-benefits there, the planet Earth, it has an environmental impact, it has a money impact. It saves people money when they have good, reliable transit. And it, lead actor in this case would be LVPC, one of the partners in the valley for us and many others, as well the Office of Sustainability, or in other words, just Sustainability Program, me. And then the metric is done by how many meetings are held with regional partners. As simple as, are there two meetings in the year, were there three, were there four? And a lot more goes into that of, did the meetings do anything? What came out of those meetings? Is there progress on the plan? But the Climate Action Plan goes through a bunch of different tasks and a bunch of different items, kind of presenting, you know, who are the actors that need to be addressing these? Who will it impact? What are the benefits? And what directly is the action, as well as the metric associated with that action? So we have some kind of way to actually track and some kind of baseline idea of what should be done to achieve this goal that we're proposing, as well as what's currently in place under the Climate Action Plan of 2030 and 2050. Now, public engagement education is something that, you know, I strongly believe in, and Nurture Nature Center as well. You know, it's a big part of their mission and their purpose, and they're currently having the Create Connections Grant. That is a NOAA-funded grant opportunity that they're able to do and conduct events. There will be the Climate Action Week, which I'll be aiding with them on one event, and then they're going to be doing events around the entire valley to promote climate awareness. And again, there's objectives in this that we can reach, and reduction potential is really the education here. You're teaching people how to be more effective in the region. Now, adopting the interim science-based target, I know when I introduce it, it is a mouthful, but adoption, just to summarize, is necessary, and this year's reporting is running out. So I do apologize for kind of presenting this tonight and then a vote possibly tonight, but part of that is that there was internal lag, an internal issue with feedback from CDP. We didn't get feedback till July, and feedback reporting is due next week. So we would need to be able to have this done if we wanted to count for this year's following reporting. And adoption of interim, you know, science-based target signals our way forward. It signals our forward thinking, our progress, our devotion to sustainability and climate action. You know, there is no risk simply to enhance our tracking, give an additional checkpoint, and continue to push me and the city and all of our partners down the path forward in the way we need. The goal is possible. 65% by 2035 sounds extreme, but I do think it is possible, and that graph that we showed you earlier shows it is a part of that natural curve if we start making changes, but changes need to happen now. Things need to start progressing fast, and that's through, you know, intelligent planning, intelligent action, and being patient with what you do. But I think we should be motivated by success and scared of inaction. I think doing nothing is the scariest thing you can do, especially when it comes to the impacts of our climate. And then I would like to thank you as well for hearing us tonight and having me here as always, and then Kate or Lauren, if either of you have anything to add, and I know Rachel's here in the audience, too, but.
Tell us about the solar lights, streetlights that were placed on Church Street.
I actually don't know too much. I know that they were placed on Church Street as part of a grant, so I actually did go with Rob Christopher today to go get plants selected. So him and I went out to a nursery outside of Allentown, and we selected 80 plants. The idea is that we selected the color variety, natural perennials and season grasses that are going to be able to stay vibrant and luscious and really just add to the color going down Church Street. In general, the fact that, you know, those lights are solar-powered or they have a light on the top of that or a solar panel on the top of those lights that as the sun rises or sets, that sunlight goes onto that and the panel absorbs that light, thus powering that infrastructure item. They're a great step and tool forward. You know, if you go down to Allentown on, I forget what road it is, but the road towards like Coca-Cola Park.
Coke Park.
Yeah, they have the whole, whole thing. It's all solar lights. And they're a wonderful way to kind of reduce your cost, and typically speaking, those lights are fully powered and enabled by that solar panel on the top. I mean, you really don't have an overhead cost anymore. You're eliminating that. But they're also more effective. I mean, generally speaking, they don't take a ton of solar absorption for them to run solely on that solar. The ones over on Church Street, I think will be really great, too, with those plantings on them. You're kind of doubling down, right? You're breathing, you're absorbing some carbon with that vegetation, you're providing a public, I mean, really tripling, quadrupling down, but you're providing a public resource for people to feel pride about Church Street and pride about those items and personality and kind of getting rid of some of those gray pastels that all of the old northeast region cities have. You know, it's just how it is out here. We're an old city, and a lot of pride comes with that, so there's a lot of gray. So those colors will break that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from City Council? From Brandon?
For which? For Climate Action Plan Task Force or? Climate Action Plan Task Force, Kate, do you know, I know it's six months from July is the estimated date, so that would put us about this month, what, March or April, just about?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question. Could you repeat it?
Yeah, just when is the next Climate Action Task Force meeting?
Oh, yeah, we have them in January and July of every year. And the Easton EAC is serving as the de facto task force.
And they meet monthly?
Brandon and I, they also meet monthly, yes.
The Environmental Advisory Commission meets monthly.
Yes, and we meet monthly in City Hall on the other side in the conference room. That's the first Tuesday of every month at 6:00 as well. And then, too, if it's like ideas or anything, my email's always open to anything. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, the first Tuesday of, I can pull up my phone really quickly and give you an actual calendar date. So the next EAC meeting will be October 7th, Tuesday, October 7th at 6:00 PM, third floor City Hall, just on the other side from here.
Any other questions? City Council, what about the public? Any questions for the public? Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah, so Kate, what was asked, if we're aware of the article that was raised in New York Times, just showing and highlighting that the climate or the climate is warmed by an average of one degree Celsius over the past 20 years compared to a rather low or no change over the past, you know, how many hundreds and thousands? And that, yeah, I am aware that unfortunately, that's a symptom of, you know, industrialization kind of hit hard and it fa- and fast. And a lot of the impacts of that and a lot of the carbon that we've put out into the atmosphere had a lagged effect, and we know that it's from the emissions we're putting out. But a lot of that kind of stacked really quickly, and we're at that point now in climate change where a lot of science had warned us, you know, once we hit 2030, that that's really the first step off the cliff. And depending on what our action is, you may be rolling down the hill quite fast. So, you know, we're almost at that 2030 mark, and science has kind of told us it's been common, and this was what was going to happen. So they've been pretty spot on.
Dr. Ruggles?
I don't know if you're aware of, but our police department has started to switch to hybrids. I noticed you said EVs, but they are switching to hybrids, and there's an enormous CO2 decrease because of that. This is from other studies, not just what we have right now, but they're committed to changing over their fleet to hybrids, and so I just wanted to make you aware that that was one of the things that have, is a direction of decreasing.
No, thank you for that. I've heard Dave talk about it, too. Emergency vehicles in particular aren't necessarily fully ready for full EV adoption, and I know that's like an emerging thing, but no, you're absolutely right. Like even, because you think about it from idling, like police officers idle their vehicles a lot, so with hybrids, when you're idling, you're not putting out carbon, like, at all. So that reduction, yeah, it adds up. It is massive, and it's a good step. It's a great step.
Thank you, Brandon.
Wonderful. Thank you guys again.
Thank you very much. Would a public comment on agenda items only? Anybody in the public have any comments about agenda items?
Good evening. Joe Welsh, Lehigh Valley Justice Institute. I came tonight to speak on behalf of the Workforce Housing Ordinance, but I can't ignore what we just heard. This Climate Action Plan is so important. It is literally our community's children and grandchildren's future that we are talking about. And I say "our community" because recently I'd said to a female colleague, you know, this is about your grandchildren, and she said to me, "So nice of you to assume that I'm having children and grandchildren." So our community's children and grandchildren's future, and it's so vital to it. And I was very much interested in hearing the reference to light rail because our state representative, Bob Freeman, originally proposed a light rail system in 1984. So the more support that we can get in back of that, the better. Anyway, to my main subject, as you know, Lehigh Valley Justice Institute deals in criminal justice issues and also related social justice issues. And as we look at those social justice issues, housing is just so fundamental. Housing is the key to just about everything else that we talk about in society, employment, education, et cetera. And this proposal just reinforces how important housing is as the home base for all that we do in life, and it is the key to stable communities. And as you know, LBJI just merged with the United Way, and one of the United Way's three major initiatives is stabilizing communities, and housing is so important to that. And what, as I understand the proposal, what we're addressing is a tier of people who are just above the social safety network, as badly battered as that is getting right now. The same people who deny climate change want to deny that we need a social safety network. So this addresses that next tier, and that next tier is vital because these are people who are employed. These are people who are the lifeblood of the community, and we need to reinforce their position in our community. And finally, I just left the career fair at Lafayette where we have a table, and I always get pumped up when I go to career fairs because you see the enthusiasm of the next generation and they're ready to go, but I got to tell you, tonight, we were swamped in a way that we never were before. So these kind of justice issues are very much on the minds of the next generation, and they're ready to do their part, and I hope tonight we do our part and pass the Workforce Housing Ordinance. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Gonzalez, president and co-founder of Pennsylvania Voters for Animals. We are a 501(c)(4) nonprofit based in Doylestown, Bucks County. Honorable Mayor Panto, City of Easton Council members, and community members. I would like to commend you for considering Bill 70, which aims to expand Chapter 189, Section 2, to include additional animal species under its existing consumer protections. Your leadership, unwavering commitment, and pragmatic approach to enhancing the welfare of your community and its inhabitants are truly commendable. As we know, commercial pet breeding mills do not limit themselves to puppies, kittens, rabbits, or guinea pigs, the animals currently covered under Chapter 189. They breed many different species of animals, i.e. mammals, reptiles, amphibians, birds, fishes, to sell to retail pet stores across Pennsylvania. Regrettably, these mills impose significant issues, including the inhumane treatment of animals, but also impacting consumers who purchase animals as pets. Retail pet stores routinely source from commercial breeding mills and use aggressive sales tactics and predatory lending practices that burden unsuspecting consumers and community members. Many pet owners are not informed about the ever-increasing costly care requirements for the animals they purchase from retail pet stores. Many of those animals are sickly, often leading to distressing decisions to surrender their animals to already overburdened local shelters and rescues, impacting taxpayers. Companion animals, including exotic pets, are increasingly abandoned in local neighborhoods, parks, and waterways, which can have devastating effects on our ecosystems across Pennsylvania. At present, the city of Easton does not have retail pet store chains that sell live animals. However, by preemptively prohibiting the retail sale of animals, you are lessening the overall demand for commercially bred animals, thus taking a bite out of pet breeding mill to pet store pipeline. As such, Bill 70, like Chapter 189, Section 2, which was enacted in 2023, represents a crucial opportunity to enact even stronger consumer protection measures. A no vote on Bill 70 would inadvertently endorse the harmful practices associated with commercial pet breeding mills, the retail pet sales trade, and their influential lobbying groups, which prioritize profit over the health and well-being of consumers and animals alike. In contrast, a yes vote would send a powerful and unequivocal message that the city of Easton is committed to the well-being of all members of its community. By expanding Chapter 189 via Bill 70, you are not only safeguarding animals, but you are protecting your community from the unscrupulous practices prevalent in commercial breeding mills and retail pet stores. Under your strong leadership, a yes vote on Bill 70 will galvanize protections for your city of Easton community and inspire other municipalities across Pennsylvania to follow your lead. A vote yes was the right thing to do for your city in 2023, and it is still the right thing to do in 2025. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Cheryl Petrillo. I live in Hellotown, Pennsylvania. I'm on the board of Pennsylvania Voters for Animals. I want to thank you for this opportunity again to speak tonight and for taking a vote tonight on Bill 70. Tyba, thank you for sponsoring it. I'm just going to kind of speak from the heart here. I've been doing this for a number of years now. Started back in Allentown in 2022 when I went into a pet store called Brookside Pets and met a little corgi puppy who was for sale for $3,000. That just started my path here, and it leads me here two years later. So, you know, the city of Allentown enacted the first ordinance banning the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores, and that was a really momentous occasion for our stakeholders, for our organization, the animals. That's who we are fighting for, because there's so many, there aren't enough people out there doing that for all of them, so I don't want to sway away from my focus, our focus, which is really the animals. So, you know, as Suzanne said, you don't have a pet store here already, so that's the good thing. If you did get a pet store here, we, I think it would do great to have one that sells supplies and consumables and services and grooming and all that, just like the Earthwise Pets in Easton, so. like the Earthwise Pets in Easton. So what's the other thing? There you may have heard some pushback. Some ads are running on social media right now. There is a lobbying group called Pet Advocacy Network. We know them very well. They are a lobbying group representing the largest and most well-funded businesses in the pet industry. That includes Petco, PetSmart, Reptiles by MAC, Petland. So PAN changed its name from the Pet Industry Joint Advisory Council several years ago. And that kind of confused legislators and the average American to conceal its true purpose. Pet advocacy, they're not truly advocating for the animals, is advocating for the people who are breeding them or selling them, who are brokers shipping them across the country to pet shops. That's who they represent. And I'm here to represent the animals because they need somebody to do that. Just an interesting side note, if you go on the Pet Advocacy Network website, their leadership board of directors, their chair is Chris Fleming, Pinnacle Pet of Neosho, Missouri. They are one of the largest puppy brokers, puppy mill brokers in the country, multiple USDA violations. They are the broker. They go the work between the breeding mills and the pet stores. So they transport puppies and kittens across the country. Their vice chair, Petland Incorporated, HSUS, now Humane World for Animals, in twenty twenty-three linked Petland stores to suppliers with very serious USDA violations. Again, these are the people who are opposing what little this little group that I'm in, this huge lobbying group, they're fighting against me and Suzanne and these few people who are here to advocate for animals. We're just here to do the right thing by them because we know that they're suffering. And we I hope that it will be a yes from all of you. I understand some of you may not vote a yes, and that's okay. This is your ordinance. We just presented it to you. And I am hopeful that right and just by the animals will will happen, and you will set a precedent in the state of Pennsylvania because you'll be the first to do that. And I thank you again for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good evening, council. Ooh, my voice. Don Prabasi, Easton resident. When this council passed legislation forbidding the outright sale of mammals like dogs and cats in twenty twenty-three, it was a win for compassion and animal rights. It's common knowledge now that dogs and cats sold in stores are primarily bred for sale in mills with abhorrent conditions. It's a disturbing system that continues a longstanding tradition of animal violence. And to not extend that same gratitude to reptiles and fish would be hypocritical as the systems are just the same. That's why I'm proud to support Bill Seventy, which would have pet stores transition to an adoption referral model for reptiles and fish rather than continue to benefit from the similar line of violence as dogs and cats experience. When pet shops make the overwhelming majority of their money from pet supplies, speaking as someone who worked in a pet store that sold reptiles and fish, this bill will not meaningfully affect the prospects of a future pet shop in Easton, which I would be delighted to have as a cat dad. These are comprehensive protections for animals that enhance our ecosystem as fish and reptiles are often taken from their habitat to be sold. And we know that simply transporting these fish and reptiles can be devastating to their health. This bill also would help future pet owners from purchasing pets who may have received new health issues as a result of these conditions. Animals should be ours to rescue only. We've normalized a dangerous profit-driven pet market in the U.S., and it's time for us to turn the page together. Please vote yes on Bill Seventy in the name of compassion, and thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to represent to city council on agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on, Mr. Madam Clerk. We'll go on to the next item on agenda is the public comment. There's no public comment left. Consent agenda. I'll accept the fact that there's no consent agenda items tonight. We will receive the monthly report from the fire chief, Mr. Hennings. We'll move on right to reports of the committee's finance committee, Vice Mayor Brown.
Mayor, have the report today's evening, but our director, Marsha Zetti, has a report he'd like to give to council.
Thank you, Councilperson Brown. I wanted to make council aware that at our next committee meeting, we'll be proposing a tax revenue anticipation note as well as a grant anticipation note, or TRAN or GAN. And those are to help us manage our near-term cash flow needs. One of the primary drivers of of this request is the current impasse in Harrisburg, which is holding up not only our approximately $2 million state pension aid payment, which would be coming in right about now, but then also delaying a lot of the grant reimbursements that we have put forth. So as as many of you are aware, when we do receive grants, and our economic development team has been great at obtaining those, we often have to front or virtually always have to front that money and then wait for reimbursement. So that basically means we're floating floating money, and that puts a bit of a crunch on on our cash. So at our next council meeting or committee meeting, we'll be going through the details of that. And just wanted to again make counsel aware.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Pittibone.
Thank you, Mayor. The department has submitted grant applications for $20,000 for public safety grant to explore shared services with Wilson, another $20,000 MAP grant for exploring shared services again with Wilson. We closed and completed the final draws for the North Forest Street parking garage. We closed out audit, the closeout audit for Rack P is coming, completed final draws for Heritage Riverview Rack P, and closed out all that auditing. This week or in the last two weeks, the department met with group, the group working to program PA Brownfield Conference in the Lehigh Valley in twenty twenty-six. It will be held in Bethlehem. And on the first day of the conference, they will be taking a tour here in Easton. They attended the Migos grand opening. We all did. That was a great event, great turnout. Rachel, I was waiting for you. She left. I thought she was going to buy me lunch today, and she left. Let's see, finalized the vendor's list for the Easton Winter Village and coordinated and attended the Mark luncheon up at Lafayette College with all first responders in preparation of, God forbid, any big emergencies. We have a plan, unlike the Ferry Street fires. Mayor, tomorrow, as I emailed council, it's public, we the Blueprint Communities mural committee is hosting the ribbon cutting at 6:00 p.m. for the mural on the side of Chubbies at St. John and St. Joseph Street tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. A lot of businesses and people from South Side who've made significant contributions to the city. So that's open for the public tomorrow, 6:00 p.m. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Pittibone. Dr. Rogos planning public safety, rather.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to make, it's not scheduled yet, but I was in conversation with the police chief, and we're in the process of planning a news conference related to the LiDAR that the police department has obtained. They've been training on it and are at a point now where they can put it into into work. It's it's, I don't know if there's another police department in the state that has one. I've not been able to find one, a police department, that is. So that that's going to be upcoming. I think it's it's a tremendous benefit. And I think hopefully, it's one of those things that you hope you never use because it's used at accidents and crime scenes. So you hope you don't use it, but when you when you have it, it becomes something that's very valuable. Mayor, I'm not sure where you want to bring up what we were going to have at committee meeting yesterday.
You bring it down.
Okay. I I know a while back, we were talking about the the resolution that was passed a while back. I forget what year it was, and and how we might be able to amend it. I sent it around to or I had it sent around to different council members, Councilman Pittibone. You responded with two things that I thought were good additions to it. And Councilwoman Sutana also responded. And instead of putting that together and then sending it out and then getting it back and then sending it out and putting it back again, I thought it'd be better if we could discuss that here. And I would like to just make this proposal. And I'm not against, I I really appreciate what you submitted, and I I'm fully supporting it. But I just feel like what we had passed is sufficient.
Without any additions.
Without any additions, without any corrections. And I that's just my opinion. Okay. But and and like I said, I'm very much agreeing with what you had submitted. I didn't quite like the language which you submitted. I think, you know, when we do a resolution, we shouldn't have it in a in a with words saying, well, this is kind of optional for you to do, you know. Resolution should be directive and and not suggestive. And so that's that's kind of where I am with what you submitted. But I honestly believe that what we have on the table shows us as a very welcoming community, a community that's supportive of all people. And it's already on the books, folks, you know. So I'm just going to throw that out there, and we can discuss however you want to discuss that.
Councilman, thank you very much. And I do think your resolution as it is, is is a great resolution. My additions were, you know, that we don't support the separation of families and 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 just some of the tactics that ICE is using right now.
Yeah.
And I felt comfortable putting in that in the resolution because, and I don't want to speak for anybody here, but I don't believe any of us support that. We can't stop it, right? Right? We can't fight. And that's why I said the resolution. And I'm not asking us to stop it. But to make it clear that, you know, the way our our neighbors and residents are being treated, I mean, they're being lied to on text message. This is the domestics office at North Hampton County Courthouse. We have something for you come here. And when they get there, ICE is picking them up, you know. And 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 the second thing I said was about, we don't support people not having due process, right? That's for everybody. And a lot of people are not getting that. So, you know, I personally, and again, I yield to the council, I need majority. But I I I think just that in there shows our stance, if everybody agrees with that, if 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 nobody does it. So, you know, I would like to see those two added in if the majority do as well. But I do admit that your ordinance originally was was good. I just wanted to throw that because I don't think we were dealing with that back then, right? Unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, we weren't dealing with it then. Unfortunately, we're dealing with it now. So I I just thought it shows our commitment to and and the fact that we're against the way things are happening and the rights of of people being violated, knowing we can't do anything about it, and we can't do an ordinance. But so that's why I wanted that added.
I have a lot to say, but I won't say today. Yeah, but we will definitely sit and talk and have less more conversation about it. So thank you.
Councilman, if I may, but I thought, no, I don't know if you want to talk about no, no problem with me, but I thought the I thought the plan was discussed in public.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, like committee meeting.
Okay.
It's not on it's not on the agenda today.
No, no, I know. Let me let me just ask this, and and just kind of clear this up. I mean, I don't think there's, this is not something that's time sensitive. So if if we could just kind of have an agreement that we'll put something together, I'll 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 take what I had, I'll include what you had put in, we'll circulate that amongst council, and then at our next committee meeting, we can look at that and discuss it. That gives you time to to look at that and see where you're at. Okay. And and then we can do it at the next committee meeting, and then.
That's fine.
Okay.
Is it a is it a, Mayor, you tell me, is it appropriate, my additions, is it appropriate to ask council if there's any objections or changes or anything before we have Councilman Ruggles drafted up, just to bring it back for people to say no?
Let me let me just say that we separate families all the time when somebody commits a crime. I'm against putting in there about separating families if there's no warrant. If there's, we have a warrant right now for a person who committed murder in their home country.
I understand.
I don't want that person in Easton.
I I understand. I'm I'm with you. I didn't.
But other than that, you're right. There's there's practices that are going on that aren't legitimate, and they're being denied due process.
I I I agree with.
But we haven't helped anybody unless there's a warrant.
No, and we haven't had any warrants. I don't.
We haven't had any warrants, yeah.
We haven't helped at all. So I guess I just wanted to see if.
I mean, we can just add a word.
Yeah, we can.
And with that, yeah.
Yeah, committee meeting would be like beneficial, yeah.
Okay. I'll add it to the meeting when I'm I'm away, I'm out here. I might call in.
Are we are we going to discuss the items that were on the committee yesterday?
Yes, yes.
When I I had a question about or an idea about the fifteen-minute parking space. Is that now, or should we do it?
You can do it now.
So I understand the need for the fifteen-minute parking. What I'd like to see happen, and and maybe we could stick to this, I'd like to stick to it going forward, is that we keep them to eight to five, Monday through Friday. A lot of businesses are getting fifteen-minute parking. This is on North Hampton, right by Fourth. The problem is when they're closed at night or on the weekends, people can't park there, and we're already parking at a shortage on the street.
I agree with it. I I suggested that last committee meeting, we will not, as far as I'm concerned, we will not enact a fifteen-minute spot that's a twenty-four-seven.
All right.
Because right now, we have people who think it's their own private parking spot.
So then that'll be on.
And the fact is downtown, you don't need any loading zone because you can get a fifteen-minute. You don't, if you're going to be in there, you're going to run in for a sandwich and run out, just put put a quarter in and get fifteen minutes.
Mayor, are we talking about Bill number seventy-two?
No, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
It was on last night's agenda.
And and Mayor, sorry, I won't be either. I let the clerk do it months ago.
Dr. Rose.
Just one more thing. I just wanted to let Councilman Pittibone know. I did not forget about his request. I approached the fire chief last week, and all of a sudden, he was.
Yeah, he has a bad week. I get it.
I I have you on my mind.
Okay, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you for that.
Public Works Committee, Mr. Redinger.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Accidentally skipped Ms. Rose. She has something.
Yeah, I'm going to get back to her.
Oh, you're going to go back? Okay.
I have no report.
Public Works Committee, Administration Committee, Mrs. Sultana.
Mayor, I have two bills under the unfinished business, Bill number sixty-nine, an ordinance amending civil services application fees, and Bill number seventy, an ordinance amending Chapter 189 animals. And I have resolutions under new businesses, resolution approving lease agreement between North Hampton County and the City of Easton, resolution approving a contract with the IFF, and Bill number seventy-three, an ordinance authorizing cable franchise agreement between City of Easton and Service Electric Cable TV I N C. And I also want to report, we had a great luncheon on Mark, by the way. And just for the public, Mark actually was the vision when after the Ferry Street fire happened, and we wanted to do something for the community. So Dr. Ruggles, myself, and Ken Brown, we came together to form this committee. Mr. Lewis helped us out. Mayor Panto was included. And after like many months, finally, we were able to have our first luncheon on September twenty-eighth. And Mark is specifically to bring all the resources together, like the United Way and, you know, other nonprofit organizations like Thursday Lines to bring together to provide services to people who face disaster, like for instance, like people who lose their houses or, you know, other things. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Sultana. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. And oh, we'll get Crystal, Ms. Secretary, Councilmember Rose.
Yes.
Your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Sure, absolutely. I'll try to make it short and sweet. I attended the the Planning Commission meeting last week. It was about three hours long. I did see the mayor in attendance as well. At eleven, about eleven p.m., the commissioners opted to continue the hearing to next month regarding the warehouse. So that that next Planning Commission will meeting, it will continue on October fifteenth. We do have two important zoning meetings. We do have two important zoning meetings coming up next week. One is the monthly zoning hearing meeting, it's on September fifteenth at six PM. The agenda's out on the website. And there will also be a special zoning hearing on September eighteenth at six PM regarding the Wood Avenue Warehouse proposal. That will, that meet, special meeting will focus on their proposal to alter and relocate a water course in the floodplain and construct a roadway and retention basin in that area. So those are two important meetings that are coming up. I also wanted to mention that this afternoon Becky Bradley and representatives from the Leha Valley Planning Commission joined me, Mayor Panto, our city administrator, our city planning director and Councilman Pinnabone to review the city's proposed zoning, uh, zoning updates. I'm pleased to share that it was a productive meeting, and we're planning to host a workshop bringing together the LVPC and our Eastern Planning Commission members in the near future. I will provide updates as plans move forward and announce any upcoming meetings related to these proposed changes. And I'm looking forward to engaging with the community as we discuss these important updates for Easton's future. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rose. The last item for Planning Commission, I was at the meeting as Ms. Councilmember Rose said. Well, I'll save my comments for my budget address, because I addressed it in my budget. At this time, I'd like the public to stand for silent, moment of silence for Tyler, one of our firefighters, especially Tyler Widener. Thank you. We laid firefighter Widener to rest today. It was a very nice and beautiful ceremony, memorial service. And it's hard to lose one of your own. We've also lowered the Easton flag in Center Square to half staff. And that is, will be that way for at least thirty days. And we can't do a lot for our men and women who work for the city who pass, whether it's in a line of work or just naturally. The incidents, the incident that occurred here was tragic because of his age, very young, he's thirty-one, thirty-three years old. And he'd been a third generation firefighter, which is commendable. His grandfather was there, his father was there, and of course him. I just wanted to say, I want to thank the public for respecting the privacy of the family. And I wish them well. His brother plays for Notre Dame High School, his kids and his newborn baby. The last thing I would like to recommend is, is anyone from the city council going to the Pennsylvania Municipal League's Leadership Summit?
Mayor, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from John. I'm supposed to speak on the housing, so they're trying to move it to Friday? And I could do your thing and speak and then come back Saturday?
We, at the Pennsylvania Municipal League, started by Mayor Smith many years ago. They give away out, out the voting award at the annual meeting every year, and I won't be there, I'll be in Italy. So I won't be able to go, but, um...
It's just such a drive.
Oh, it is a drive.
Six hours one way.
It is, it is a long drive, it's longer than Washington DC. But it's a long drive, but you can do a bit, Mr. Pinnabone, I know you can.
Thank you.
Mayor, I am invited by the Women in Government group, but I have not decided if I will go or not. But I will let you know.
All right, well, let me know, because I, I will order the plaque. In J.C.'s, we used to call it a PLAC and a Cet certificate. I know you weren't around.
Too young to even get that.
You're, you're not too young, it's from eighteen to thirty-five, I was a member. And that's the end of my report, so let me know if you're gonna go to the PML.
Mayor, do you have the award, the plaque for the, uh, the municipality with the highest voting turnout?
That's, that's Easton voting award, yeah. We, we didn't order it yet, we'll order it before next week. So we'll move on in the agenda, there's no correspondence? Oh, there is correspondence.
I have a report.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. First, a housekeeping matter, the council had a brief executive session before the meeting today to discuss property issues and litigation. One of those discussions I can talk about now was, the city is, is happy to report that there is an interim agreement between the city and the Rock Church that settles the Hooper House eminent domain taking case. We were scheduled to go to trial on Tuesday, and on the eve of that trial, as is often the case, the parties actually managed to hammer out an agreement. I'll, I'll go over just the, the very broad strokes here, so the public's aware. The city is going to pay three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the property. That money is going to, the result of that is going to be that the city will retain the Hooper House and the addition that is behind the Hooper House. The city will subdivide the parcel so that the Hooper House, the addition, and then the Timothy House will be on a separate parcel. And the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price from the city will be used to rehabilitate the Timothy House in a manner that's consistent with HDC and code requirements. And any funds that may be left over after rehabilitation of the Timothy House will be used to rehabilitate the Rock Church proper. So that's a really great result for the downtown, we get to preserve this property, we can start preservation work on the Hooper House immediately, thanks to this resolution. And we can clean up some of the properties downtown and really help that area. So unless council has any other questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Moving on to unfinished business, Madam Clerk.
Did you want to do correspondence?
Of correspondence, your correspondence.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Mayor, the city council members received an unsigned letter from a resident of Easton.
We love that.
Addressing the conditions of the streets. And I did email that to each member. We also recently received forty-four voicemails and emails regarding the pet ordinance, either for it or against it, which I also emailed to each of the council members.
Okay. Now we'll move on to unfinished...
Mayor.
Go ahead.
During the budget season, if we add fish to the agenda, we'll get a turnout. Everybody came out for the fish ordinance, fish and birds, and nobody comes to the budget. If you add fish, they'll come out. Not one person comes to budget, but I've heard from everybody in Easton about fish and birds this week.
So true, so true.
Do you have anything else to add to this?
No, that's it.
Our session.
That's it.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Um, bill number sixty-nine and ordinance amending the civil service application fees.
We'll move.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Rose?
Hi.
Dr. Ruggles?
Hi.
Ms. Sultana?
Hi.
Mayor Panto?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Eddinger?
Hi.
And Mr. Pinnabone?
Hi.
Bill number seventy and ordinance amending chapter one eighty-nine animals. Move, just a quick thing.
Second.
We need a second here.
A second.
Oh, you're, you're seconding it, I thought you were asking for a second, I thought you were taking my job.
So Mayor Panto requested to delete fishes, and if this is what takes to support the ordinance, I'm okay to delete that, but...
I am here to represent human beings. They vote for me and I appreciate their support, and you can't take a fish for a walk. If somebody shows up with a snake at one of our festivals or an alligator or anything, I understand that. But fish, I, I just have a hard time understanding how fish can live out of water. And the misuse of them, and I understand the breeding and the transportation, I understood that. But big fish eat little fish, and I just have a problem, I would like to delete the word fishes.
I'm okay with that, but just to clarify, like, it's about like mass breeding, like for instance, fishes, you know, grow fishes in a small and cramped areas. That's what, where the disease comes from. So, but I'm okay with deleting the word, honestly.
I'll move that.
Okay.
I have a question too.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
In reference to this, and this may be geared towards the people that came in today. What happens to a small mom and pop pet store that comes in town? That that's their livelihood, and we're saying that they cannot have birds or, or turtles or what have you? Are we putting them out of business that way? Or are we, are there, for lack of a better word, how does that work?
You wanna come to the podium? Mayor, you want?
Yes, please.
And anybody can answer.
I, I also wanted to add something to that, Councilman Brown. I, 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 there's not a pet store in Easton. So I mean, a lot of this is, I guess, to prevent future situations from happening, but I, I kind of looked at it on the flip side. I, I did do a little research and looked this up, and there are a lot of issues with pet stores throughout the entire country. And other municipalities have tackled it purely from a health and codes-related stance. And many of them that sell live animals oft, often create nuisance issues like noise and odors. And then care standards aren't met, and it becomes a codes and health, a health department problem. And with our current staffing shortages in those areas, I don't really feel like that's something we can take on and handle effectively. So I, for my two cents, I will be supporting this.
Mayor, if I may, that's a good question that Councilman Brown has. But I don't think putting them out of business is, is an issue, because if they're trying to come in, they're not in business yet. So I don't think we're, well, I know we're not gonna put them out.
Like I said at the last meeting, you basically zoned out all new pet stores. You won't have one in Easton. If I, if I was coming in to see this and I saw that ordinance, I'd say, well, I, I can't sell any of these fish. I can't sell, I can't sell animals because I don't know where they come from. Yes, responsible pet store owners would be allowed to come in, but who's gonna make, who's gonna follow up on whether they're responsible or not? How do I know where they bought it from a puppy mill or from a breeder, local breeder? I don't know that.
May I?
Please.
So first and foremost, pet stores, retail pet stores, it is documented that...
You're talking big box, right?
Big box, even your smaller retail pet stores, they derive less than five percent of the revenue from the sale of live animals. Live animals are a draw for people to come in, and they, you know, will take their kids in to see the animals. But at the end of the day, it's the services, it is the supplies. And it is actually the veterinary care that a lot of these pet stores provide. That's where the money is coming from. So to answer the question about a mom and pop shop, if this ordinance is enacted, they would not be able to sell mammals, fishes, or not, reptiles, amphibians, and birds. But they would be able to provide a vital service to the community. As Dominic mentioned, as a cat, a cat dad, he would love to have a pet store in Easton. And they do provide a vital, very much needed service to all of us. So if it was a mom and pop shop that sold supplies, which is where they make their money, or grooming services, or as I mentioned, some of the pet stores are now providing veterinary care, that's where the dollars are coming from. So to your, to your question again, mom and pop would come into Easton, welcomed, I would assume, to Easton, but they would be limited in selling live animals, but they would be able to provide supplies, grooming services, et cetera.
Where does it stop? I owned a meat market for twenty-one years, so you don't want me to sell veal?
I, I'm not here to talk about...
Well, what I'm saying, where does it stop?
What we're here today to talk about is the sales of animals in pet stores. Because we know unequivocally, they are coming from commercial breeding operations, it is well documented, a highly unregulated industry, as well as the impact to your consumers, your constituents. The fact is, they are selling animals who, most of them are sick, they're very, very sick. They also use predatory lending, as I mentioned, we've all heard about puppy mills and we've all heard about predatory lending for dogs. But go visit a bird store, I was just down in Quakertown not too long ago and visited a, a new pet store. They're selling parrots for fourteen thousand dollars. They are using predatory lending, again, I did check this out. People come in, it's an emotional purchase, they fall in love with the bird, and then it's the package. Buy this, you have to buy that, fourteen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars for a bird. And what they don't realize at that time, because pet store is not gonna tell them, this is a lifelong commitment. Birds can live for decades. They can outlive, I mean, they would definitely outlive me, but they do not take into consideration, the consumer doesn't take into consideration the cost of care. Find a Navy and Vet. Also the predatory lending, if you sign away your life to buy that bird, and God forbid that bird dies, or you surrender that bird, you still have to pay that loan, so...
I, I, I agree with that part of it. I, I had a rare cockatiel. And it didn't cost that much, I wouldn't be foolish enough to do it. But there is some thought that goes into it before you purchase like that, because what people don't think about is veterinary care.
They don't.
Because when you buy an animal, a bird, and it had, had a white shepherd that just passed away. And people don't think about that. So I understand what you're saying, I understand, like, I'm just, I, I think that this ordinance is really, you know, it's targeted to a big box. And I understand that even in big boxes, what's the first thing you see when you come in the door? And a lot of, like, the big, uh, stores go in, you see all the attachments that go through that animal. It's a, it's a draw.
Yeah.
A draw, and then what you see is the animal. So I understand what you're saying there, and I appreciate your honesty for me.
Yeah, and, and may I one, make one more point? Even with the pet stores, they have transitioned to a humane sourcing model, where they work with local shelters and rescues. And so when you do come into that pet store, you're still seeing animals, but they're actually helping our local shelters and rescues who, oh, by the way, as I mentioned earlier, are drowning in animals. And so that in and of itself will be a tremendous benefit to your community, because you would be encouraging any pet store that would come into Easton to adopt a humane sourcing model, working with your shelters and rescues, and helping your community by fostering an adoption of an animal that needs a home.
So, so how do, how do you document where the animal is coming from? I mean, it, it just seems to me that, you know, if, if you have an ordinance that says, no, no dogs, no cats, no, any, any animal...
Which you have right now, dog, cats, right?
But I'm, I'm, but, I mean, if we expand that, but when you're, you're talking about having a pet store here that is kind of a conduit for the shelter, but they can't be here because they can't sell dogs and cats, right?
It's not selling, if you're i- i- in the ordinance, like, I can tell you that language exists already in chapter one eighty-nine, section two, that you have it built into your ordinance already that the pet store can work with local shelters and rescues in transitioning to this adoption model. It's all spelled out in your existing ordinance.
But, I mean, that would be, that would be essentially selling.
No, no, it's not, because, and it's a great question. But the rescue or the shelter would be responsible for that adoption. The pet store in essence would be providing a location, that visibility where people are gonna come in, a platform for these shelters and rescues to basically showcase the animals that are up for adoption. But technically, that rescue or shelter would still get that adoption fee.
Ma'am, to your, just, I have another question.
Sure.
So these stores could still have animals in their store.
Absolutely.
They just can't sell them.
Exactly, it would be the adoption model, which is in your ordinance, that language is already built in. In essence, your ordinance...
But there's, there's adoption fees, I mean...
Right, yeah, but that's not selling. That's, so go to any shelter right now, or, you know, any rescue.
Right.
That is an adoption model, where they... That is an adoption model, where they are paying an adoption fee. It's not a sale.
So, so, I mean, the pet store out at the mall could, could say, okay, we're not selling these anymore. We're, uh, we're saying that we're...
They, they can't do that. Even in your current ordinance describes what a pet store, what the parameters are around a pet store. Yeah.
I just wanna say that I had two dogs that were rescued from SPCA. And I had aquariums with fish in them. And when they were sick, I got them taken care of. My problem with, with the ordinance is it's another obstacle to getting business development in Easton. We've now zoned out pet stores. Basically, we zoned them out because we were gonna dictate to that business owner where they can buy their dogs and cats. And they've, they can't sell the, anything on our, in our list. And I just think it's, it's ridiculous to be able to, um, be out there promoting your city to try to get businesses into your city and then tell them, oh, well, you can't do that.
There, there is a outbreak of disease that I was literally reading last week. It's called Sacymolla, something like that. It's a bacteria, li- it's literally outbreak out there. And if there are animals with those bacteria and disease, I wouldn't want this, this kind of store to be next to my home.
Right.
And if I don't, why would I want this store to be next to my home?
Well, I guess that was my other issue is, is our code, our, our health officer would have to enforce this, I guess. Because we don't have nothing in the ordinance, who's gonna enforce it?
Oh, you do.
Okay, so it's the health officer?
No, it's the police department.
Well, no, the police department only does dogs.
It's in the previous...
Yep, Mayor, it's in the ordinance.
Okay.
The, the city police ordinance empowered to enforce the ordinance.
Well, they're not trained to believe, to do that. They, we gotta, we gotta take care of dogs, we don't even take care of cats.
Yeah.
The state law says the cities, municipalities are responsible for dogs. That's all it says.
But, so, Jeremy, so, if somebody does have animals, our police department will just go in, identify it, and they'll have to let the health...
Well, they'd issue them, they'd issue them a citation, and I can't read the, the, uh, oh, there it is, five hundred dollar fines, uh, for violation of the ordinance. So, you'd be, you'd, they'd essentially be issuing them a, a citation, and they could do it, uh, presumably every time they went in there to find a violation. So, you could go consecutive days and issue a new citation.
Mayor, question, question for you, Mayor. The councilwoman says she would take fish out for you. Does that make a difference for you, or, or no?
It makes a difference that I would vote for it. I still don't think the city should be involved in this. I mean, it's not in our purview, it's not one of our responsibilities. Um, it, it's just look, it's a feel-good ordinance. I mean, who's against taking care of animals? I'm not, I'm all for it. I'm all for this ordinance. Man, my dogs ain't better than me. But, um, but, you know, I, I just, well, my little dog did it. My lost opse, he, he, poor dog, my wife ran over him. But he still lived, he lived, he lived.
Edit that.
One more question. All right, and this is directed to our solicitor. Um, with our current age of online, how, how do we, how would we... And, well, how would we interpret, uh, someone who's sitting here in Easton, that goes online and purchases a, a dog that, down in Arkansas or someplace? I mean...
That would, this ordinance would not apply to that because the, the, this ordinance requires the, the business to be located physically within the city of Easton.
Okay.
So, you could purchase theoretically, a, as, as Councilman states in the hypothetical, uh, an animal through the internet from anywhere, whether it's Arkansas or Palmer Township, and have that animal delivered. And that's not a violation of the ordinance. Because the business is not physically located within the city. That's, we only, we don't have jurisdiction to go beyond...
The transaction takes place here.
Well, that opens up another, a very, another definitional set of terms. Technically, in most places, the, the commerce occurs in the place the business is actually located, even if it's online. So, you, the consumer, purchasing from a, a dog in Arkansas, technically, on, 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 there's a lot of, a lot of caveats here, I'll leave those out. That transaction occurs in Arkansas. Because their business is located in Arkansas, even though the internet is everywhere.
Okay.
That's how the laws kind of handle that issue with the internet.
That's the only thing I was worried about.
So, Councilwoman, you amended your motion to exclude fish?
If that's what takes to gain me a pen to support.
I'm only asking because I have to change my second to amend fish to, if that's what...
No, we'd have to, we'd have to make a...
We'd have to make an amendment.
Yeah, they're, they're...
And then a second.
Yeah, there'd be a motion to amend a second, a vote on them, on the amendment, and then a, a vote on the as amended ordinance.
So, I'll make the motion to, to accept it with the fish removed.
That's, that's fine, that's the same, outside accomplish is the same thing.
Right.
And so, Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
I would have better understanding.
Mm, uh, Mr. Ettinger?
No.
And Mr. Pinnabom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, this is for the, uh...
We're gonna vote the amendment.
Amendment ordinance.
I'm motion to move.
Move then, is there a second?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, what did we just vote on?
We, we vote on the new ordinance, it's to amend.
To amend it.
We're voting on the...
Now we're amending, we're amending the ordinance.
So, we're voting on the ordinance with fish out?
Yes.
Right.
One fish, two fish.
But not now in the aquarium because then it would die.
Okay.
I made a motion, second.
Second.
You don't have to make a motion.
It's already, that motion was already made.
Yeah, it's already made. And second. Just have to vote on the amended motion.
Vote on the amended ordinance.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
No.
Uh, Mr. Pinnabom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
And Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, so...
Moving on, that passed by a six-one vote, I believe?
Bill number seventy-one.
All right, so moved.
Now, wait, that's an, under unfinished business. That's under new business?
No.
No, no.
That what is it?
Oh, it was supposed to move up top.
Yes, it was moved. Okay. So, an ordinance approving workforce housing.
So moved.
Second.
And...
Discussion?
Any discussion?
No.
I have some.
Go ahead.
After, uh, talking to our director, and as I said before, I, I believe that this really should happen, should work. Um, I do have some concerns still, but I was assured that my concerns, uh, if it's over, uh, bearing with them, that we would look to another entity to help us be able to, uh, run this program. This program is definitely in need. And, um, I also received the letters, I didn't personally, so I asked a clerk to send them out. It was addressed to council in reference to some of the developers in the area. So, I'm comfortable at this point going forward.
Councilman, if I may, I, I spoke to Mr. Kingsley and others after your conversation. In its current form, I, I know you're pushing for a third party to administer. It wouldn't make sense.
No, no, I'm not pushing up anything. I'm saying, if in fact, it gets overwhelming, that we should be open enough to look at that. That's what I'm saying.
Right. But all I'm saying is, the fee that we're charging is so nominal, small, we would lose all the money paying the third party. We wouldn't be able to use it to, to work on affordable housing.
Uh, uh, and what, what would it be to us to run an inefficient program?
I, I don't, I, I, I understand what you're saying. We're, we're short police, code officers, we're getting it done, we're not going outside, I think we...
I don't think we have endeavored into this, other stuff.
No.
But I'm, I'm for it, so I'm gonna just pass, move on.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna, I'm, I've spoken against this because I don't think it really addresses anything. I think this is another feel-good ordinance, it's gonna be on the books. It's, every developer I know is gonna just pay the ten thousand dollars per unit. But I will vote on it because I believe in workforce housing and affordable housing.
Ma- Mayor, if I may, just because you think it's a feel-good, um, I, I, I don't understand it. Because if we can add, we have developers, Shiloh, who have a budget gap, we have no more money to help them. They're doing a hundred units. If we collect fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, that's money we, we could possibly give in the, in a, in a, uh, in a grant to help promote workforce and, and affordable housing.
See, that's my problem with affordable housing. Affordable housing doesn't work if you're gonna keep giving grants to cover the gap. It would cost, you gotta build affordable housing affordable.
But you only need, you're not gonna...
We're not building affordable housing. I lived in a, in a public housing unit, my bedroom was, that I shared with my brother, was ten by ten.
The box.
But Mayor, we're not gonna keep giving money. It's one time, cover the gap, they build, people live there. It wa- it's one time, we're not giving it, we're not gonna keep giving it. But my, my concern is, we're giving developers seven and a half million, eight million plus of tax credit, taking them up to ten million to build luxury units. And I understand, I don't have a problem with luxury units, because I understand we need units from all ends, right? We need luxury, we need middle class, we need low income. But we're giving millions in grants, and that's not a problem, but giving thousands...
Correct you, Mr. Pinnabom, we're not giving anything.
We're not, no, the state...
The state is.
Right.
And the state is ta- taking all the money from the suburbs, where the lily white people live and the rich people live, and giving it back to urban communities to build these great projects.
Right.
So, we're not giving them anything, we're not giving developers anything, we're charging them. And now we're charging them ten thousand dollars, which, right there, two hundred seventy thousand dollars. That guy's gonna, JB Ryder's gonna write a check for two hundred seventy thousand dollars to the city. I agree that it could be worth the grant to give it, but...
That's what I mean.
Affordable housing doesn't work if you're gonna have to, Shiloh's building six units, they're gonna sell for a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. They're gonna cost two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to build. What sense does that make? I don't need ceramic tile back, back, what?
Backwash.
But Mayor, I don't, I, I, I don't understand that question. Uh, uh, the developers bringing it in as cheap as they can, there's still the gap, right? So, people, uh, it's easier for somebody to qualify for a mortgage at one seventy-five than it is at two fifty-two, two, two seventy-five.
But you can't build a house and lose fifty thousand dollars per unit. That just doesn't make sense to me. I know what it costs to build a townhouse, and believe me, it, it shouldn't cost a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, even today.
I, I, I have a gut feeling, and I, I, I agree with you, Mayor, because I was spoken, said that before. I have a gut feeling what's gonna happen. It's gonna work irregardless, but I think what's gonna happen, developers are gonna come in and they're gonna pay that ten thousand dollars per, uh, unit that they're...
And, and, and they absolutely might. But it's from grant money that we just opened the ribbon-cutting that everybody was happy about for the transitional housing off Ferry Street. It's the grant money that's gonna build four more units at Porter and twenty-two total for sale and for rent in the city of Easton. It's grant money. This is the same thing.
You're, you're, you're taking an affor- a, a, affordable house, you're putting a, a lower-income person in there and saying, oh, but don't worry about it, we're, we'll cover the gap. No, you work for the gap.
But you're not covering the gap for the people, you're covering the gap for the developer. The same thing you're doing here. Mayor, how many times have I heard, if they don't get the rag pay or the tax incentive, they're not gonna build because they can't make the money? I don't understand the difference. They're getting theirs, and that's fine, I support it. But now, we're helped, we're getting some money to help somebody else. Uh, it's the same thing.
I don't believe you should be building a house for two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars and selling it for a hundred seventy-five. I just don't, it doesn't, it's, the math doesn't add up.
From a business standpoint, it doesn't make sense, but when you're trying to help...
It, it does make sense.
Who are you helping? The people that are moving in, Mayor, they couldn't move into a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, but they can move into a hundred and ninety thousand dollar house.
And developer, I think the developer's not putting, he's coming in underneath of that.
Well, he's gonna come in, and, and actually, Mayor, it went up to about two fifty, two seventy-five since last time. But the Shiloh is still keeping it, no, not going over two hundred. So, the goal is to get the grant funding to cover that gap. Now, they don't lose. Shiloh's not gonna lose fifty thousand. Now, they can sell it to you for two hundred, where you wouldn't get approved for two fifty or two seventy-five.
Here's, here's a novel idea. Why doesn't Shiloh lower the profit, their, their profit, if it's twenty thousand dollars a home, lower the, the unit by twenty thousand dollars?
Okay. Then you're still at two thirty, and they wanna sell it for two hundred. So, you're gonna still have that gap.
But your twenty thousand dollars isn't going to the developer. There's no profit available. But, listen, I have a problem with the church, the Italian Presbyterian Church up on Ferry Street. Why are we, why are we building a unit that you're gonna rent for less money than you... And, and the nice thing about government doing affordable housing, we don't have to make, we don't, we, we shouldn't make a profit. But we shouldn't lose money either, because taxpayers are paying taxes to give away, and that's not fair.
But Mayor, that's a, you're, you're talking about a bigger issue, grant money. So, if we're getting it anyway, why can't we give it to the people that need it instead of just the millionaires? The millionaires getting eight million, nine million, seven and three-quarters million to do a project that they say, if we don't get it, we can't afford to do it. And what we're saying is thirty thousand to allow a nonprofit to do it, so we could put people that can't afford it in there. It's the same thing. If your issue's with the grants, we gotta go to the state and federal government, not here. But as long as they're gonna give it, we should use it for all of our people.
I'm, I'm for the grants, because the R cap money comes from the entire Commonwealth and comes back primarily to cities. And I agree with that, because I'm tired of the suburbs not doing their share of affordable. You, how many affordable housing units are being built in Palmer and Forks?
I don't know, but I'd say none.
You would be right.
I, I don't disagree with you, Mayor, but...
I would agree with that. And also, some of the municipalities are actually making sure that none of that happens anytime it, it, it's proposed. Meanwhile, we're carrying the load over here, it's so frustrating.
Right. But it is what it is, and we gotta do our part.
We have to do our part, but they have the land.
Mayor, I, listen, if we could vote, do you wanna pass a, an ordinance to get us to build affordable in Palmer? I'll, I'll vote for it. But I can only control what I can control, so we gotta, and we gotta do this.
No, you're right there. Dr. Ruggles? Um, I, I, I'm for this, but I just wanna reiterate, and I, I've said this in the past. We can't solve the problem of affordable housing by building houses. Uh, we just can't. We can't build enough houses to do that.
That's an assin' problem.
And, and, and we need to look at that problem and figure out ways in which we can address it. And to me, the most logical way is to make people who are in the situation not being able to afford a house is to be able to have them afford it, we, get them, put them in a position where they can afford it, and purchase it in the open market. I mean, the open market has the housing stock that is needed in order to fill the supply. And, and, you know, if, if we go in thinking, okay, we're gonna build affordable housing that's gonna solve the, uh, housing problem for, for people, that's not gonna happen, because we can't build enough.
I, I don't disagree, Councilman.
What happens in seven years or five years when they decide to sell that house? Who gets that money, the fifty thousand dollars that was lost?
So, Shiloh, their units, um, have deed restrictions and everything on it for twenty to thirty years, something, something like that.
It's five years, they gotta...
And to Councilman Ruggles, I, 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 I don't disagree that we should find a way to build our people up. We can start by increasing minimum wage from seven twenty-five an hour. But since we don't have the say on that, we have to do whatever we can do. Five, also, LVPC just came out with their most recent study, and they said the city of Easton is four hundred and thirteen...
Seven hundred and thirty-five cents an hour?
I don't know.
In the Lehigh Valley?
Yeah, but they're...
Or they shouldn't be?
But who can live on fifteen an hour, sixteen an hour? You can't live on it. You, you can't live on it.
Seven thirty-five is a market value for the entire state.
No, no, I, I understand, Mayor, but if you take seven twenty-five and you move it up to, let's say, fourteen, then the people at fifteen are gonna get bumped up to maybe twenty, you know what I mean? And it goes on from there, you, you're trying to bump it up.
Let me tell you, Domino's is paying six dollar.
Well, that's illegal.
That's illegal.
They gotta lease pay seven twenty-five.
That's, that's what I'm saying, there are companies who are still paying...
But to Mr. Councilman Ruggles' point, they say, LVPC's most recent study said the city of Easton is short four hundred and thirteen units. And that's what's driving the cost up. If you have, you know, if you have twenty people fighting for two units, look at these houses, they're going on the market for one fifty, selling for two seventy-five. That house isn't worth two seventy-five, but there's not enough to choose from, so they're driving the cost up.
That's the...
So, I do, right, but I do think if you build more, if I have twenty people fighting for two houses, a- as the owner of the house, I can mark it up as high as I want, let them fight over it. If I have twenty houses, only two people, that price is gonna come down, because they have options. So, I do think the more housing we produce on both ends, the low income and the luxury, and, and the middle class, I think that's what's gonna help us drive cost down.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Point is deed, is the market. Market's driving...
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't disagree with, with that strategy. But my point is, you can't build enough houses to force that market that you're talking about. Because you, I mean, we don't have the roof for... We don't have the roof. Places to put four hundred houses.
Not houses, units.
Four units, you know, where you're gonna put them?
Well, we're, we're doing seventy right here, there's another hundred and fifty planned for Southside, you know? And then, I, I don't know where the rest is gonna come, not the developer. But I'm, I'm just saying, and I'm not saying we're gonna hit the four thirteen.
Listen, you're arguing with me, I, you got my vote. I'm gonna vote for it. Last week I was... You're arguing with me, I, you got my vote, I'm gonna vote for it, last week I watched.
I, I believe it when I see it.
Well, I'm voting for it.
Go for the vote, then I believe it.
Okay, Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Um, bill number seventy-two, an ordinance amending Article Three, adding a loading zone at North Ninth Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Under new business, we have a resolution supporting the city of Easton's adoption of an interim science-based climate action plan, GHG emission reduction target.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Uh, we have a resolution approving a lease agreement between North Hampton County and the city of Easton.
So moved.
Second.
Jeremy, am I allowed to vote on that? Is, is there conflict for me?
Yeah, you should probably abstain from that, since you are employed by the county.
Moved in second, any other discussion? I believe that what, the parking problem in downtown Easton is legitimate, and this addresses it, between the ones that we have right now with the two hundred and fifty with this lease, the sixty-five, it's a social security building, uh, I believe we, we, we're close to over three hundred units, and it didn't cost us a dime, this, this does cost us, just so you know, the public knows, we will be rescribing and we'll be responsible for maintaining that, plowing it, et cetera, so.
Oh, that's awful.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll be responsible for it, it's better than paying.
It's better than paying thirty thousand dollars.
Parking spot.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
We're gonna put you out there with a shovel.
No, 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 that's a horrible sight.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye, and abstain.
Yes, okay, uh, we have a resolution amending the twenty eighteen community development block grant program.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, uh, I have something from Mr. Brett, he just wanted to iterate that the approval tonight, um, the redevelopment authority is proposing to use these funds for existing activities in the action plan to include housing acquisition and rehabilitation for the creation and rehabilitation of affordable housing units in the city.
We need a, roll call.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Ms. Saltona?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
A resolution approving the contract with Easton Firefighters Local Seven Thirteen.
So moved.
Second. Move in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Pinnabone?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.